So, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 4th, 2024. It is 6:02 PM and I'm calling this special meeting of the Groton Board of Education to order. Our first order of business is discussion of the approval of the Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Shipping Container Grant. Matthew, would you care to read the motion?
I move that we approve the Connecticut Grown for CT Kids Shipping Container Grant in the amount of $250,000.
Do I hear a second?
All second.
Okay. And so at this point, we will discuss the item. Who would like to present?
Well, I think we have Ernie and Shannon on, and they were the dynamic duo that put this together. I was there this summer when the Commissioner of Agriculture was suggesting that this might be a good grant. So, Ernie, would you like to talk a little bit to this and what you hope to accomplish with it?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ernie Koschmeyer, Food Service Director. Just so you all know, in case you don't. We were asked to apply for the 2024 Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant Shipping Container. Working closely with Agriculture Commissioner Brian Herbert. He was very instrumental. He's been down a few times looking at our program and stuff, seeing our farm-to-school program, all the great things that we're doing and everything. So, part of this whole purpose of this grant, and again, as it was mentioned, its value is $250,000. And it's spread over an 18 months to design, to get it installed, to get it functionable. Part of the goals that I was really intrigued with is that we want to create a sustainable food system of year-round growing. As we know, the world is changing, and this is one thing that's an educational thing that we can experiment with and play around with, but it will produce roughly 983 heads of lettuce on a weekly basis. So roughly 4,03950 heads of lettuce a month. It's not enough to take care of all of our lettuce needs in the district, but it's a huge chunk. The other thing that I'm really thrilled about is that it's going to support our Summer Meals Program through community giving. And what I mean by that is we're going to be able, in the summer months, the lettuce will keep on growing. And we're going to be able to add them to our Garden Fresh Bags that we started handing out last year, roughly about 225 bags every Friday, free of cost to kids that participate in our Summer Meals Program at our community hubs, as well as the Groton Town and Groton City Parks and Rec. We hand out Garden Fresh Bags that contain stuff locally that's sourced. When I say that, I mean like it could be peppers and squash this week, it could be lettuce and spinach and tomatoes the next. As we know, different types of crops come in different weeks and months of the summer. So, we hand those out free of charge to students, and how that's paid for is through donors such as like the City of Groton, Chelsea Groton Savings. They donate funds for me to be able to purchase a lot of this stuff along with our own fundraising efforts that we do through our plant sales and stuff like that. We give back to the community. Any child that participates in our Summer Meals Program, that's what we do with that. So, this lettuce will definitely help. It also, one of the bigger things with the state and the USDA is they want us, if we were able to accept this, is to create a standardized SOP and a HACCP program. So, they want us, because we're one of the first public school districts to actually get a growing shipping container. We're going to be creating a standard operating procedure and a HACCP requirement for farm-to-schools programs that are in public schools. And as far as even going right down to the cardboard boxes that are USDA-approved, to how the lettuce is packaged and what's the optimum temperatures and all of that. We're going to be able to create a standardized thing that they're all very interested in and learning more about. So that, because they know that year-round growing is going to become a thing, especially with the weather change and patterns that are happening. So, I'm excited about that piece. And lastly, student engagement and hands-on learning is going to be a huge thing, especially with our STEM tracks. To be able to have students to be able to come through the shipping container, to learn about it, see how it is, have some hands-on. Again, we're going to be able to take small groups inside the container. But it would be a great thing for the kids to see how their lettuce is grown, how it's in their schools, how it's on the menu and stuff, and let parents and the community know as well what we're doing. So, those are some of the big goals that we have for this unit. And like I say, and Shannon can talk more, but this is no cost to the district. Usually, a lot of my grants that I get have a matching type situation. This one here has been designed that it's, there's no matching funds required. Food Services would take care of the, you know, the plants and stuff. We would take care of the the integral maintenance of the pieces and stuff through my farm-to-school coordinator. So, it's no cost to the district. I did, you know, want to keep mentioning that because this is a super grant, and we're excited to be able to accept it. So, that's about what I have to say about it. And the shipping container will be, it'll be wrapped, so it looks attractive and stuff. It's not just going to look like it's right off a trailer truck sitting in a sitting in a spot or something. It's going to be wrapped with a nice design and stuff, so it's going to look attractive and be kid-friendly. And pretty much, that's a quick snapshot on what we're hoping to do with this unit.
Thank you, Ernie. Sounds like a great opportunity. Does anyone have any questions for Ernie? Jen?
Thank you for that. Actually, I just had a question regarding the container. Where were you thinking of putting it?
So, great question, Jen. Right now, we're looking at a couple locations. Again, we're we're trying to make sure that we have accessibility for power and electric. That is electric. But, you know, to have some water available as well. I'm trying to make sure that the location is great for students, safety, making sure that when we bring field trips down, that they can easily get off the bus and they're close to where the unit's going to be. So, I'm looking at all of those different things and working with Mr. Kilpatrick to find us the best location that we can all agree is going to be the optimum for safety, security, and most functionable.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if you're thinking of putting it next to the greenhouse at Fitch, but that's just logistics. I'm going to vote for it. I'll just...
Thanks, Jen. That is one of the locations that we've been studying, as well as putting it up near the greenhouse at Fitch High School.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ian?
Oh, thank you. Yes. So, I just want to say that I am definitely in favor of this idea. I worked with Fresh New London a number of years ago, and they were working on getting fresh food farm-to-table into the schools over there. And that was, it's a noble effort, and I'm glad to see, actually, the idea of growing it inside the school is just another step up. Just to be clear, this grant, nothing in this grant is going to go for paying for positions. It's all just infrastructure and costs of like the power and the water and all that?
Yes, it is, Mr. Thomas. It's, again, it's, I already have the farm-to-school person on my staff. And we have some of my staff who, after hours, who like work four hours, would be helping with the unit as well, switching off type thing because there's so much interest.
Great. And those are all staff positions that are funded through the school budget, regular budget, not a grant?
They're funded through Food Services Budget.
Okay. Excellent. Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Shannon, I know you were instrumental in assisting with the writing of the grant. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Um, I do not. I think Ernie explained the project really well, and I was delighted to work on another farm-to-school grant with Ernie, and I'm very excited that we received it. So, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, comments? Susan, did you have anything to add?
No, this is the first part, and then we have a second part that we have to do to certify the resolution, so.
Okay, right. And will we be reading that resolution?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, that would be part two.
Part two, yeah.
First, this motion has to pass. Adrian?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I am extremely happy about this grant and what it's going to be doing for our kids in our school. So, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this and the benefit that it's going to have in our district.
Ian?
I just one last quick question about the the shipping container. How long do we anticipate its lifespan to be? And when should we anticipate or plan for replacing it? What kind of maintenance and upgrade will be required?
So, great question, Mr. Thomas. So, the shipping container is good for 20, 25 years. And the design build is where, is there. I'm designing it so that it's easily, when the pieces, we're talking about PVC piping. As PVC piping, maybe malfunctions or cracks or breaks or whatever, it's pretty durable stuff that it's easily sourceable like at Johnson's locally or one of the big boxes, but it's all going to be designed with the purpose that we can just simply get our own parts and fix it. It's a pretty easy design, and of course, the shipping container itself is solid steel, so they're pretty durable for many years.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. So, if there are no other questions, I certainly support this motion, and so I will now call for a vote. All in favor of the motion on the floor to approve the Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Shipping Container Grant in the amount of $150,000. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that motion passes. Jen, would you be willing to read the next motion relating to this along with the resolution?
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Hold on.
Okay.
Let me see. Hold on. Just need to grab it from from our attachment here. Does somebody else have it? Hold on.
I have it.
Okay.
I think anyone.
All right.
You want to risk it?
Yeah. Do you want to read the motion and the certified resolution?
Oops. No. I see the motion. I don't see the resolution. This is why I never read.
Right. All right. So, if you want to read the motion, I can read the resolution.
Okay. I think this is it. To adopt the certified resolution. Oh, that's the resolution.
That's it.
So, the motion to adopt the certified resolution, enter into contracts with Connecticut Department of Agriculture.
All right. And do I hear a second?
Aye.
Okay. And so just to read the resolution into the record, and then we'll have a discussion. Be it resolved that it is in the best interest of Groton Public Schools to enter into contracts with the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. In further instance of this resolution, the superintendent of schools is duly authorized to enter into said contracts on behalf of Groton Public Schools. The superintendent is of schools is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute other documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts and to execute any amendments, recissions, and revisions thereto. The Director of Buildings and Grounds is authorized to impress the seal of the Groton Public Schools on any document, amendment, recission, or revision. It then reads, "I, Samuel Kilpatrick, Director of Building and Grounds of Groton Public Schools, do hereby certify this to be a true copy of the resolution duly adopted at the Groton Board of Education Special Meeting on March 4th, 2024, and that it has not been rescinded, amended, or altered in any way, and that it remains in full force and effect." It would then be signed by Sam, dated, and the seal impressed.
That's right.
So, are there any further questions or discussion with regard to our acceptance to adopt the certified resolution? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, that motion carries. Thank you very much, Ernie, Shannon, and everyone on your team, Ernie. We're looking forward to seeing this greenhouse installed.
Thank you again, everybody, for your constant support. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ernie and Shannon, and Sam.
Good night, Ernie, Shannon.
All right. And our next agenda item is discussion and possible action regarding Board of Education members' budget data requests. It's at this point that if anyone has any additional data requests over and above those that we've already received and have been answered, this could be the time to make a motion for additional data. Does anyone have a motion? Adrian?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to retrieve information from the administration into reasons why the 9.232% budget increase was changed between the dates of February 23rd and 26th, and why the superintendent's revised budget of 7.91% was not able to be amended by board members prior to the vote.
Second, Thomas.
Okay, second. And is there any discussion?
Could I just ask Mr. Johnson to just review the background of his motion? And clarify exactly what it is he's asking for?
Yes. My understanding was through the budget meetings that took place through February 23rd that we had, you know, talked about a budget that had varied up and down quite a bit and ended at 9.32%. On the afternoon of on the afternoon of February 26th, we received an email with the amended budget. And it, I didn't have sufficient time to review that or review it with enough information to make amendments. So, I just wanted to get a little bit more clarity on what happened there.
Thank you for that. Also, it's my understanding that in reviewing my notes from that night, we had inquired as to whether or not we could amend the number, one way or the other. And we were informed that we were not able to on account of like previous drafts of the budget not being saved or not being available, and then the amount of time it would take to revert to a different number would risk us exceeding the deadline of the 28th of February, where we had to turn the budget in. So, I also share Mr. Johnson's concerns about the about the process, how that number came to be to move from the 9.3 something that we had determined loosely on Friday night to the 7.9 that we were given shortly before the meeting on Monday. Not sure who authorized that or what that action, what happened, while we weren't presented options. And then when we asked for options, we were prevented from exploring options due to the time constraints. Again, process and procedure is problematic here. So, I think some information background on that would be beneficial for us to understand exactly how that came to be, and so we can prevent it from happening again in such fashion. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
I don't know how to put up my hand. But Jay, it's Andrea.
Yes.
I distinctly remember being Superintendent Austin being charged with making additional cuts, and that was on Friday night. And the cuts were to be delivered by Monday. So, she did, Superintendent Austin did what we asked her to do. And I thought that we had given her permission to do that in places where she felt most, I guess, the best places to make those. And that was my understanding of what we asked her to do.
And that was my understanding as well.
Adrian?
Yeah, to be fair, it was my understanding that there was going to be an additional proposal for possible additional cuts, and that was the way it was presented in the meeting. I had kind of assumed that that had meant that we would be voting on the budget that we had come into, that had ended discussion, and that we would be voting on any changes as an amendment. We were, at least myself, felt like I was personally asked to either vote on that budget or vote for a zero budget. And I made what I thought was the best choice at the time, you know, voting against a zero budget. But not having any chance to make amendments or change that budget was not what I expected going into the meeting.
If I could say one more thing, Jay, and that is that it sounds to me as though we all made what we thought what we thought we heard, you know, honesty. And it doesn't seem to me like anybody is is brewing discontent. I think it's just the way we each understood it.
Thank you, Andrea. Ian?
Thank you, Jay. Yeah, I guess like the problem for me is that the previous draft wasn't available for us to revert to, and that's going to tie into something I want to talk about a little bit later. But I just felt like we had very few options presented to us. I understand that perhaps the superintendent was in the impression that, you know, the numbers should attempt to go down further. But, you know, the superintendent was not in attendance on Friday night when we met. And that's when we clarified kind of the strategy that we wanted to bring forward. So, you know, a number of times throughout this procedure, we've asked for options, like a menu of options, like two or three at least of scenarios, and it seems every time we ask for that, we never quite get that. We end up with one. And then when we asked to maybe revert back to the previous one, we're told, no, that's not possible. So, you know, we're hitting the wall here with, you know, the software or its direction, or it's just like overall understood procedure. So, I'm about done. I don't really have anything more to add to this particular motion. But I do have some thoughts on how we can correct this moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I still don't know where my hand is, but maybe this is, all right, I got it. Maybe that's why we should have a retreat.
Okay. All right, Ian? Is there anyone else?
Just a quick, I mean, I don't understand, I mean, is it standard practice to save previous drafts of the budget so we can move between final numbers at will at some point, or is it not?
So, I think that through this motion, perhaps this attendant working with the business manager can address the issue of how the software
saves drafts. I mean, I would think that there's a master file, like do you just? I mean, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of obscurity about like how the software works, so.
Yeah, so I think this.
I'll make another motion later, deal with this.
Okay. All right. So, is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Adrian, did you want to just restate your motion so that everyone knows exactly what you're asking?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to retrieve information from the administration into reasons why the 9.32% budget increase was changed between the dates of February 23rd and February 26th, and why the superintendent's revised budget of 7.91% was not able to be amended by board members prior to the vote.
And just to say that I don't think anyone did attempt to offer an amendment, just for clarification. So, in regards to his motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Thomas.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye, the Washington.
Abstention, I'm sorry. Jen, was that an opposed? Matthew? I'm sorry.
Abstain.
Yeah, at this point, I was asking for opposed. Any other opposed?
Jay, I have to tell you that I know that you're not in favor of abstentions. However, I really don't know what I'm voting on. I truly don't. So, I'm going to abstain because I just
Okay.
I'm just slow with this.
Rob, were you going to record a vote?
I'm staying.
Stay, okay. So, I'm counting three in favor, two opposed, three abstentions.
Mr. Turner, could you run down the list of who voted what? Just to be sure, we got everybody accounted for properly?
So, I had Adrian, Ian, Jay as ayes. I had Jen and Beverly. Nay. I had Andrea. Matthew. And Robert opposed. And Robert opposed. Uh abstentions, I'm sorry.
Hey, Jay, I'm gonna change mine to I. Only because the three members of the uh board whom I deeply respect have voted I.
Okay. Right. Right, so that motion does fail. Um, do we have any other motions?
Point of parliamentary procedure, parliamentary inquiry there, Chair.
I'm sorry, yep.
Um. I'm not sure how we are with the changing of vote stuff. For Robert's rules, I I think, you know, once you, once you vote, you vote.
I'm only doing what I saw other people do in meetings within the week and nobody said that.
Uh Joan, did you have something to say?
Yes, uh you have four yes, two no, and two abstain, and that means the motion passes.
I'm sorry. My mistake. Thank you uh. Thank you for keeping me honest, Joan. And so it's perfectly acceptable for Andrea to change her vote.
That's how history has been done.
Okay.
Education meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that passes. Are there any other motions for uh data requests? Adrian.
All right, I've got a, I've just got a couple of them. So uh this goes into a question that came up before. But um I'd like to make a motion to request the in in the administration to explain. In detail what goods or services will be displaced out of grants. As a result of moving uh staff, services. And supplies from the board budget into existing grant fund um funding.
Second, Thomas.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Can can you just restate that? Please, Adrian.
Yes, and and I have all of this written down, so I will email it with Joan um with my grants, but. So a motion to request the administration to explain in detail what goods or services will be displaced out of grants. As a result of moving staff, services, and supplies from the board's budget into existing grant fund uh funding.
Right, so that motion is made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, just just to clarify what I'm saying there, um we moved um at least one full-time position. And a lot of um a lot of other smaller category items into grants. And um presumably we're moving them into grants that we already have, that we're already using to pay for stuff. And I would just like to know what exactly we're losing. Out of that we're currently paying for in those grants. Um that we would, you know, that that's off being offset basically by what we're putting in them.
Is there any discussion?
Oh, yeah, I I'm in favor of this. I I think it's important contextual information we need. Uh as we deliberate. In greater detail.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
If if possible, could you also um? Let me just see, we have one. Three, four, five, six. So I have seven in favor. Any opposed? Under you were in favor, right?
I'd be. I just know. Never mind.
Okay.
I'm trying.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Matthew abstains. All right, so I have seven in favor, one abstention, so that motion passes. Adrian, I think you said you had one more and then it was gonna be.
Um also, I'll just run through mine if that's all right. Um if anybody wants me to stop, let me know. I'd like him, I'd like to make a motion to request that the administration provide details on exactly. Um what impact each lost position in the ARPESR grants will have on the students directly.
Uh second, Thomas.
And can you just um repeat that, Adrian?
Yeah, I'd like him, like to make a motion to request that the administration provide details. On exactly what impact each lost position has in the ARPESR grant. Or each what they will have in a relation um on the students directly, what losing those positions will have on the students directly.
And is there any discussion?
So my thought in that, uh just to understand where I'm coming from, um and we didn't really discuss this um very much at the meeting last week. But if we're losing ten aides, um into my understanding. We're losing ten aides, um you know, in that budget that we passed on Monday. Were in addition to not just in ARPESR, but they were um aides that we had prior to COVID. And um I I I don't have those numbers exactly. Um I I know Susan was gonna get them to me tomorrow, which I really appreciate, but. Um it appears that those positions are are lost and I was told that they do bus duty in recess. Um how are we gonna make up for those positions, for losing those positions in the district? Um and then uh another um question I had is currently some some classes in the high school have. Um are divided up with um students with with a lot of students with IEPs. Um so I think by law you can put about half the kids in a classroom that have an IEP. Um and some some classrooms have been set up. Um where they're they're set up like that and there are tutors to assist the teacher. To basically help that class flow and get through the information. Uh is anything gonna be happening with those classes when we lose? Um as many tutors as we have and seventeen of them is in the, you know, the most current one, but I I think we've. I I I'm actually not even sure how many tutors we've lost in total. And then um and then also. We've lost um a lot of um teachers as a result of of, well, actually, this. Uh I'm gonna leave this one off because it's part of a different, a different question. So just those two things.
Right, so any discussion?
Um. I'll I'll let someone else go first. Go ahead, Rob.
Wow.
Um. My question about this is, I know you want. Information on how it's going to impact the students directly. My question is, how how are we gonna quantify that based on just tutors? It it seems a little ambiguous to me to be able to come up with. Um a sort of scale on how much is going to impact and require that information. Um without kind of a more concrete understanding of how that information is going to be gathered or given. That's just my. My confusion with it.
Ian.
Oh, yeah, actually, my point will probably tie directly into that question. Um. Basically, I I I think this has to do with looking at caseloads and um overall. You know, assessing. These positions that are being reduced and what were they doing prior to reduction and what what would they not be doing? You know, so we gotta look at student caseloads essentially and what their assignments were and how is that gonna be covered moving forward? If I understand Mr. Johnson's motion correctly.
All right, is there any other discussion about the motion on the floor? Adrian.
Yeah, Rob, I I would say that I agree with that. It is very hard to um. To write that down on a sheet of paper and say this is what we're losing. But um. That my counterargument to that would be that on September first or whenever school opens the end of August. Um we are gonna have a hundred less employees in our school district or somewhere. I'm not, I'm not actually sure what the exact number is and maybe maybe Susan knows that. Um and she could let us know, but we're gonna have a significant amount of fewer employees. And I'm just wondering what our plan is. To have that many, like to lose that many positions. What are we gonna do on that first day of school when everything is as different as it's gonna be and with the budget we've passed?
I recognize Andrea, then Rob. Then Ian.
My concern is about the uh. The right to privacy and how will this impact if we receive this information? I know we're not going to get names of of students. But you might be able to deduce who who's. Who the uh the individual. Who will be impacted, you might be able to do deduce who that is. And I'm not. Comfortable with that.
Rob.
Um I don't disagree with your counterargument. That makes complete sense. I understand where you're coming from and what the goal is. It's just as you stated your motion. At getting that information, how we're gonna get it is the is the part that's holding me up. Everything else, I you're, the logic of it makes sense. Just the the wording of it and how we're supposed to get that information is the part that's holding me up on this.
Right, Ian.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, so I'm speaking as a teacher myself. I mean, I think. Maybe what we're looking for, for one, as far as privacy concerns go, uh. You know, the the information could be anonymized as as much as possible. Also. Uh we can review the information. In an executive session if necessary, uh since it involves personnel or other sensitive documents. But I think also it'd be, I mean, I empathize for the teachers that that remain. You know, again, speaking as a teacher myself, uh you know, in in a classroom where there are supports. Those supports are dependent upon and and um. You know, so. There's probably some ability, you know, we could survey the teachers and uh, you know. Anonymously if needed and or, you know, through some sort of um. You know, exclusive uh access there. That we can get a better sense of um. You know, what their sense of the impact will be. Uh I know it it could be hard to quantify numerically, but. Perhaps narratively it could be achieved. And again. You know, we do have executive session at our uh at our disposal when it comes to sensitive documents. So um, you know, we should not hesitate to use that if needed. Um we're all board members, we are. Um privileged to know. Certain information and we need to understand how the district works and if we're passing this budget, if we're gonna approve the budget. Uh we need to know. The cost benefit analysis uh in full context. Thank you.
All right, any more discussion before we vote? All right, so all those in favor of the motion on the floor. I'm sorry, Adrian, did you have something?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I just cleaned up the language. I should have re reread this before I proposed the motion. I apologize for that, especially to Andrea. But um um I just cleaned up the wording a little bit to say um to clarify the motion. A motion to request the administration provide details regarding the impact of each lost position in the ARPESR grant. And what it will have on the students directly.
Uh second, Thomas, for the rephrase motion.
Yeah, again, I'm I'm concerned about how that'll be communicated, but um. I don't think any of us on this board are are unaware or happy about losing one position. Uh through this process and this process has only just begun. Um because it has not been finalized by the town bodies. But um. I think um. You know, obviously. Uh I would want to know what what effect this is having. To the the best of the ability of the superintendent to uh to communicate that. I don't know what method that would take, but. All right, so at this point, all in favor of this additional information, please say aye.
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 Don't like the wording, but I'm gonna vote aye. Because I understand the purpose.
Andrea.
Thinking, I'm sorry. All right, aye. Yeah, I can't find my hand again, never mind.
All right, any opposed? Matthew, that's in uh in a in opposition?
No, I'm sorry, that was up there before. No, I am abstaining and. I'm abstaining because there is an opportunity cost to this that hasn't. Been evaluated. The opportunity cost is, I I agree with the intent. I think it's premature to do this because we're in the budget season still. Looking to make additional adjustments and I think the workload that we're asking to do at this moment is an opportunity cost that's gonna cost us. More reflective time on this budget at the moment, so I'm gonna abstain, not in opposition to what we're doing, but I think the timing is 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 premature. I I give it another month.
Yeah, that we we are asking um the administration and the staff to do. An enormous amount of analysis and work in addition to their normal workload for a budget that isn't final yet, so.
Mr. Chair, a point of order?
Yes.
Um we we are still in the middle of a vote, correct, or?
Yep, so uh that does pass seven. I in favor, one abstention.
No, I abstain too. I abstain too.
All right, I'm sorry, Beverly.
Um, moving forward, Mr. Chair, could we do just roll call votes on every vote? Um it's getting a little confusing to track what's happening with the votes.
Yep, we can. Are there any other? Motions?
Um, yes, uh um one more. I'd like to make a motion um for the board be provided the staff responses. From the twenty twenty-three school climate survey. To be done in executive se- session to present disclosure of a record that is exempt from disclosure.
Can you explain that, Adrian? I don't understand what you mean.
Uh first of all, we would need a second.
I would second that. Thomas.
All right, um so uh my feeling is is um the feeling of the teachers in the climate to try to get a handle on how the teachers are feeling in the district already. When we're looking at cutting a hundred jobs. Um we should know how the teachers feel to make that decision. Um I mean, I personally would just like to know. If our teachers are generally happy, if they have comments that say. That maybe there's too many um educators running around in the classroom and they can't figure out what's going on. Or maybe there's not enough, um or maybe things are, you know, maybe they're very happy. But I feel having a um. A general feeling for the board to know what the climate is from the teachers um would be helpful in making this big decision of of all of these cuts.
Ian.
Uh, thank you. Um this sort of dovetails with one of the motions I was going to make later on. Um, so I'll just say I'm in favor of this um sort of runs parallel to. What I was thinking about bringing forward as far as like having a uh executive session to re- review all the surveys that we have. Uh as well as the NEASK report, so um. I'm I'm in favor of this motion and I'd like to hear what the rest of the board has to say. Thank you.
Matthew.
I have no problem with the motion again, Adrian. Right now. We have a budget. That neither needs to be defended as it is. Or changed. We've submitted our uh budget, our budget now. To the council. Uh unless more money flies in, uh the way it's gonna go is either where it is or less. And I thought we had agreed we were going to spend a fair amount of energy to go over this year's budget to see if there were any more economies we could do. I really feel we're overloading the administration's capacity to do what we said we wanted them to do. I really feel we're overloading the administration's capacity to do what we said we wanted them to do. All of what you say I think is good. And it, it is important in preparing for next year, but I think this ship has sailed. So I am going to. Abstain again. I don't want to oppose you. I think it's worth doing, but I think it's worth doing well two months from now.
Um, Ian and then Bev.
Uh, thank you, Jay. Um, so just to kind of push back there a little bit, um. One of the reasons I was, I was gonna make the motions to review the surveys and the NEAS report, uh, similar to what, uh, Adrian was asking for. Here with this motion. Um, we do need to go over this budget. We do need to approve it and make it our own budget. Um, what we have is, is a hybrid between some of our influence, very little bit of our influence. And the proposed budget from the superintendent. Uh, with some proposed changes that, uh, were made, but again. Uh, we have not gotten the information that we've asked for, um, all this time. Um, all the way through January and February. So we have, um. In order for us to fully vet this budget as it stands, I mean, the understanding that we had before the vote on the twenty-sixth was that. We're going to vote on a number that night. Use that to, you know, uh, satisfy the deadline. And then we're going to go back into the budget where we had a little bit more time. And information. Now, we cannot really vet the budget and make the allocations and the adjustments that we believe necessary without. Contextual information. And I believe these surveys and the NEAS report as well. Can serve as guiding documents to help us determine where perhaps. You know, we want to allocate the funds that we do have. Um, available. So, and what other adjustments we want to make. Um, so, again, again, in, 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 uh, the effort of providing greater context for ourselves. Um, we have, you know, the balance of the month of March to get to the initial public hearing. And then there's also a few weeks in April that we have until we present the budget. Um, officially to the town council and have them vote on it. If I understand timeline correctly. So we do have a number of weeks here and, um. I think it's important to find guidance, you know, and, and we need that those surveys and the NEAS report, I think would serve well to, uh. To help us, um, navigate our way through this as far as where our priorities should be. Thank you.
Beverly.
Um, I, I agree with Matthew. Um, that we should just move forward on this and, uh, look and see where we can make efficiencies. It's going to take the superintendent and her staff a long time. Cause you all have a lot of stuff that you want her to get. It's going to take her a long time to get all this information together. So I don't even know if it's, if she's able to get everything together in time for us to review it. And make a educated decision. So I'm standing with Matthew. I'm going to abstain. Because I think it's just a lot of work for the superintendent at this time. Thank you.
Uh, so Robert hasn't spoken. Rob?
Uh, I am leaning towards, uh, Matthew on this one. There is a lot of things that we're asking, a lot of things that we're requesting. And while I believe this is an important thing and we do need to get to it. Um, our main focus is, um, going into figuring out the budget and getting that settled. Um, we will have plenty of time to look at staff reviews, figure out what happened. Once we get through the budget. We will have plenty of time to go through that. I think. Requesting all of this, going into executive session, doing all of these things that we should eventually do right now is. Taking time away from the budget that we all want to be working on.
Ian, then Adrian, then Andrea, and then I'd like to say something.
Um, yeah, so first off, um, the NEAS report is complete already. Uh, that document exists as well as the update in twenty twenty-two. And so I'd be curious to know, um. You know, one question to be answered later is, uh. When did the previous board review the NEAS report? The initial report and when did they review the twenty twenty-two update that was issued by Principal Kelleher? Um, two, uh, the survey, um, the climate survey, I believe is already done. Uh, there's been a fairly recent one. And also there's other surveys that are complete. That we already have the information. So we're not asking for any new information. We're just asking to have a chance as a board. To discuss that information in, in, in a way that is respectful of people's privacy and the positions and the offices that they hold. Um, so that's why the executive session I think would be appropriate. And again, I don't understand, and perhaps some of my fellow board members could, could enlighten me. I mean. How can we really work on the budget if we don't understand all the context of how we got to be where we are? And, uh, what priorities are, have already been identified in one form or another. As areas of need and areas of, areas that we should focus on. And where we should allocate, make sure that funds are properly allocated to support those areas. Um, I've reviewed the NEAS report on my own and the update. And I have some questions and concerns and I definitely would love, well, I would highly encourage this board to consider. Including that as well as the surveys that we, again, we already have in hand, um, a number of them. So, um. We need to deliberate as a board what we determine, what, what priorities exist. In those documents, you know, as we review the information that's in there. I mean, this is all information we already have, to my understanding. Um, so. You know, I don't see any severe delay coming out of this. I mean, we could meet. You know, twice a week between here and the end of, and end of the month and knock a good bit of this out. Um, one of those and just as we schedule special meetings, just put a standing agenda item in there that. We may break in executive session as needed, depending on what subjects we want to discuss. But I really just don't understand how we can make an informed decision if we don't have. The ability to deliberate on the information that we have at hand. Thank you.
Adrian.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say, um, that these surveys were already done and although now it's March asking for them. Um, a board member asked for this specific thing in August of twenty twenty-three. Um, when, uh, board member White was talking about, are the teachers happy? Um, in Jan, in a meeting in January, I believe I requested this again, and I believe I've requested it again in February. Um, so it, it's, um, and I, I, I mean, we should ask, uh, Susan or Phil. I mean, maybe this data is. Relatively easy to get up, get to us. Um, so I don't know if Susan can, um, can kind of chime in. Is it, is it difficult to produce this data based on, um, what we have?
I've told you that the, um, unions have, um, really said that this is really not, um. Something that they want released in public, that these are confidential documents and teachers need to trust us. When filling out surveys. So there's, there's teachers, there's administrators, there's families. There's paras and they're under the assumption that this is a confidential way to communicate. Both their, their, um, you know, their positives and their challenges. We did put together a comprehensive report that was presented to the board. This is already over a year old data. We're already doing the twenty-four, um, surveys, but to give. Um, and redact names and make it so that it is totally confidential and trustworthy. It's really something that you can't just hand over to someone. Because I can't trust that it wouldn't go out in public. And then they would not. Our staff would not want to fill out surveys. It's really important. It's by law in Connecticut that we do these culture and climate surveys. So that we understand what's going on and our principals with their teams create goals for the following years and work. To make things better. So that has all been happening. So I know you all weren't here last year when we did the presentation and we had the principals come in to speak to you. But I think it would set us back by letting information like that go out. And to have to redact it and, you know, make it so that it's, um, totally confidential is almost impossible.
I, I, um, I just feel like, you know, if I were to put myself in the place of a teacher. Um, and you had comments, um, about climate and send them to the administration. I, I, I just wonder how many teachers actually don't want the board to be able to re- review that in a private manner. Um, I mean, I.
Well, they have reviewed it. We have shared the data and we've shared it pretty comprehensively.
Um, I think we've seen four, um, teacher comments or something like that in that, in that report. I don't. Um, so I don't know if those teachers actually gave permission for their reports. Um, are, are these, uh, surveys taken anonymously or are they taken with?
Yes, they're taken anonymously. Absolutely.
All right. So we don't know whose comments are whose. Um, it's not, it's not like the person that gave the comment. I mean, obviously you can make, so a teacher could make a comment in such a detailed fashion. Um, that you might be able to figure out who it was, but the, the survey was taken anonymously just for, for clarification.
It was. But they trust that it's not being used in any way that, you know, could, could come back to them.
Well, I, I would, I would love to see how it was worded, um, that way. And I, and I would love to. Hear what the union leader has to say directly about that.
Andrea.
My first thing is that no one's going to die if we, we act on this, this year the way we have it. The second thing is that. I, I can't imagine a teacher not wanting her voice or his voice heard. And finally, this is exactly why we need to have, um, a conference together. We need to, to hold, um. And then the, the word is escaping me. Jay, help me out.
Retreat.
Thank you. We need to retreat here. Um, this is exactly why we need to do this. We need to, to discuss as a board. With the superintendent in, at present, what we want her to do. We can't be, uh, pulling things out of the sky after she's done what she's done. Or that, that she doesn't know that she's supposed to do. We need to sit down as a board on a Saturday. Help me understand this. I mean, I love being on the board. I love acting for children. But to ask somebody to give up two to three nights a week to do this is unrealistic. It's almost inhumane. So. If we sat down on a Saturday as we have in the past and devoted the whole day. To things that we have submitted that we know we want to talk about. Then we would be able to do that. Together. And. I would say to present to the superintendent and her staff. What she's expected to do and not just pull it out of the air. And this will give us also. Uh, and, and idea of what our fellow board members want. Has to hear it, uh, during a meeting on television. It's not the way to go.
Ian.
Uh, thank you, um. So. For one, I, I, I would, uh, also like to see, uh, well, I guess it might be a question of the superintendent. Um. Was that communication with the union leader, uh, in writing?
No, it was not. It's just been, um, a sidebar conversation and.
But honestly, like I have concerns with that. And I would like an official letter from the unions leader stating that. If that's the case, if that's their position, I'd like to hear it from them directly. Because honestly, like as a teacher. Myself, if I had issues with the climate of where I was working, I would want to make sure that. My concerns are being heard for as. Broadly as possible through a diverse body of people. So that, and, and with. Into a body that has some authority over. My immediate supervisors as well. I mean, let's just talk about balance of power here. Um, so honestly, as a, and, and, and I am a union member as well. And I would be very upset, you know, if I found out my union leader was. Was not allowing my voice to be communicated to those who could provide oversight. Um. For my supervisors. So, you know, again, like it's about checks and balances. And, and so if there's. You know, where I come from and my life experience, you know, if it's not written, it's not real. So, you know, if it, if there's no official communication from the union leadership. Then I don't know what we're really talking about here. Thank you.
Uh, Phil? Then Bev, then Andrea.
I just wanted to clarify that, um, when we send the, when we send the surveys out. Um, what it states in the survey is that it's being used by the building principals and district leadership to set goals for the upcoming year. Uh, so I think if we're going to move forward in the future to use this in a different manner, use it to make budgetary decisions. Use it to discuss, um, as a board to make budget decisions. I just think we need, we'll need to clarify that when we, uh. Set the new survey out. Um, the new survey is set to go out in a few weeks. Uh, so I do want to reiterate that the data that we're discussing is going to be, uh, just about a year old, um, as well.
Uh, Mr. Chair, point of information.
Okay, and then we're going to go to Bev and then Andrea.
Right. Are, are we not considered, uh, district leadership?
Again, it was, it was not to discredit you from being district leadership, but it, we never discuss it being used for budgetary purposes. But like I said, we could, we could change that and we can make it clear to them that their comments can and will be used to make. Budgetary decisions. I just don't think that's clear. Maybe, maybe you feel like it's, um, it's inherent in any. Survey taken at this level, but I, I, I'd, I'd rather clarify that so everybody knows.
Um, all right. Well, also, also for, well, that, that's another matter because the initial matter was saying. Union leadership had communicated concerns about us reviewing the stuff in such a manner. And, uh. We don't have that in official communication. And I, I, I can't imagine a union. Not issuing a letter firmly stating their position on such a thing. So, um. You know, I'm still seeking clarity on that.
Yeah, and if Jay, Jay won't be willing to request that on behalf of the board, I, I think, uh, we could pass that along. Or you can email them directly.
Okay.
Beverly. I just want to restate that the, the feeling is that this is, um, an anonymous survey. It is done, um, so that teachers feel that they can trust the situation. And feel free to say what they need to say. And I just think that we are at risk of not having teachers feel comfortable in doing so. If it becomes something that is shared. Beyond what we, beyond the scope that we had intended it to be shared. And for other reasons.
Beverly, then Andrea, then Adrian.
Okay, I, I, I think that the person who provides the oversight is the superintendent. It's good for us to know, but the superintendent provides the oversight. And we have to have trust and faith in the superintendent. And I'm really getting a strong feeling here. That we have some people that do not trust and have faith in the superintendent. Because I don't know.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order.
I don't know how all this is going to help us resolve the budget issue, knowing what the survey says and all that.
What is your point of order?
Uh, signing intent. Okay. Do you repeat that?
Still noted.
It's not considered proper procedure to assign intent to other people's, uh, comments and questions.
We should, we, we, we should, uh, limit our, uh, discussion to, to our own, uh, thoughts. Um, Andre, did you have your?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to take that down.
Those were my thoughts, Jay.
Yeah.
This is exactly what I'm talking about. Um, if I, if I may address the, the idea of. Of the survey being anonymous. It, it is anonymous. There's no names ta- uh, um, attached to it. So that I I have every confidence that if you. If you really feel strongly about something, you tell the person who is in charge, who is the superintendent. And. If it's anonymous, it's anonymous. No, I don't know how you would you would. Take that away. However, this is exactly what I'm talking about. We should not be doing this on a. Tuesday night at. Seven fifteen. And when we're all thinking about getting out of here. Because as much as we are devoted to the board. We're human beings. And this is exactly why we should be devoting all of our attention to this. To. These questions at a retreat. For the whole day where we give it our entire attention. And I don't think I'm the only one that that is. That feels this way. I can't believe that I am. That's what I had.
Adrian.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to go back on what Phil said and and you know that that it was whether it was meant to be used in a budget meeting or not. This is a budget meeting, but this is a budget meeting where we are cutting. Tremendous amount of staff out of the district and some of it is expend expiring contracts. And some of its positions that won't be refilled because of retiring teachers. But the climate is going to change next year. And to make those decisions in an effective manner, I feel like having this information or having the information of how the staff feels now. I mean, now being last spring, but that's that's the most recent data that we have. Having that information is important in making decisions going forward on where we think money should be spent. I mean, paraeducators are relative. I mean, they, I mean, about a retiring teacher salary is about six paraeducator salary, something like that, correct? With, you know, when you take into to account benefits. So making decisions on how many pairs we need or how many tutors we need that make more than a pair educator, obviously. Is is important to know what the teachers feel like already in the building to try to help make that decision. So.
Here educators are not being cut. We need to follow the IEP. And the PPT process. So those are really. That is what informs us and the number of paras that we have and and. What they're used for, you know, to support students. So that's not on the table here.
All right. Well, well, we cut a bunch of aides, a bunch of. Substitute teachers like that were essentially on staff. I believe that's how that works, right? When they're building subs. We cut twenty of those. And we cut. I don't even know how many tutors. I think like seventy or something or sixty or a lot. So we are cutting a lot of staff that's going to have effects in the building.
Now, there is there any other discussion? Regarding releasing the culture and climate survey results. Hearing none.
The question is, isn't that what it's for? That's all.
Right, so. I'm going to go with a roll call as suggested by Mr. Thomas. Adrian.
Aye.
How do you vote on this? Andrea.
Aye.
Sir.
Andrea. We're taking a roll call, so if you could.
Yeah, I I hear you.
Yeah. How are you voting?
Nay.
Beverly.
Nay.
Ian.
Yes, aye, in favor.
Jennifer.
No for now, but. After the budget season, yes. So no.
Matthew.
No.
Robert.
Nay.
All right, and I'm voting aye. So that is. One. Two, three in favor. Five opposed. That motion fails. Do we have any other motions regarding data? Needed for. Budget data requests, anything to do with budget. Ian.
I have a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, if you state your motion.
Make a motion to issue an invitation to the union leadership to comment on the Board of Ed review of climate surveys in any context.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, apropos to like the previous conversation, I just want to get clarity on. Exactly where the union stands in regards to climate surveys and. You know, district leadership, such as the board. Are reviewing them, whether it's a budget context or any other context. And of course, with all respect to privacy, we would do it possibly in an executive session. As long as any votes that come out of it would. Be done publicly. Thank you.
Rob and then Andrea.
For the same exact reason as the last vote, I feel like this is something that doesn't have to be accomplished within the next month that can wait. Especially when there's new information that we know is going to be coming out soon. I we jumping the gun on this while it would give us information, and I understand that it's not a priority to me.
Andrea.
What a precedent this will will set. We have to call the 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 union now as a member of the union. We have to call the union in. To get permission. On what we want to to establish as a board. Never over my dead body, never.
Matthew, then Jen.
I'll give some one sentence context to what I'm going to say. I think one of the things that's motoring a lot of these. Motions. Is something that I hold in common. There has been this budget rollout process. Has been less than ideal. I'll put it gently. It's been less than ideal. Had it come out as a budget that we could actually look at. That we could interact with as a whole from the beginning. I think a lot of the questions would have sorted themselves out. Rather than coming at this late date. Having said that, I find that the. I'm sensing perhaps incorrectly, there's a there is amongst some an emotional tenor of distrust. That I feel is dysfunctional to the board, dysfunctional to the functioning of the superintendent, and ultimately.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
May I please continue?
What is your point of order, Ian?
Again, there's signing intent. I mean.
I'm speaking about my feelings. I'm assigning no intent to anybody else.
But we should. Not.
I sense a feeling. Of discord. That is dysfunctional to the board. Dysfunctional to the district. And ultimately dysfunctional to the students. What we're asking for is reasonable. The timeframe is not reasonable. Thank you.
Jen.
The district has a strategic plan in place. And I know we're asking for data, but I don't think it's. The right time and place. We need to trust that. That Susan and her leadership team. Right, are making the best decision based on. What we've proposed or they've proposed as a budget. We can't and we shouldn't control. How many substitutes teachers they want to keep or let go. We can't control how many. Teachers they want to rehire after someone retires. We need to let them do that part of their job. And we need to, and I totally understand climate. But and obviously, we want like a good behavior, you know, like a positive feeling within the environment because we don't want to lose teachers, but. In this timeframe. And with the data, so Ian, you've mentioned two things. One was a survey and one was a report. Maybe the report can be easily granted because it's already consolidated. And maybe the survey is after the spring survey. So I mean, that's a compromise. And I don't know if it is because I don't know what that other report is that you're referring to. If it's something just like a lift and load drop, fine. But to have them redact everything. As well as all of the other information that we just asked for. I don't I don't really think that's fair to the staff. That's it. Thank you.
Ian.
Thank you. Yeah, quick. So just a couple of points of clarification there. So I wasn't asking, this motion was not intended to ask for a. Direction or permission from the union leadership is more just to ask for their general comments as far as like. You know, because we just heard from the superintendent saying that there was. Pushback verbally. So I just wanted to have that formalized, understand exactly what the union's concerns were. And oh, you know, maybe some sense of what parameters would be acceptable to them, not saying that we would take that direction. Just saying it's good information for us to know. Second. Yes, as far as the NEASK report goes, it is all complete, as is the update. It's all, we did get an email with it. About a week or so ago.
But that's a different, that's a different topic, right, Ian?
Right, yeah. So so I was just responding to to to. And Jen about that. And so I did have a motion concerning that that I'll follow up with here as soon as we get closed out with this item.
Okay.
So that's all I got to say about that. So I mean, really, all I was just looking for a little clarification to follow up on that last bit of exchange as far as like. You know, where is the union leadership? On what's their position on us reviewing climate surveys? Just so that we all on the same page and so asking for it in writing. Now, that could take five minutes of a quick, you know, email that the chair could fire off. I don't think it would inhibit our. Budget deliberations moving forward. We've already voted on whether or not we're going to look at the climate survey. So that's a moot point. It's not going to happen now. I just want to get that on the record. And it may take some time for the union leadership to reach out to their membership and actually gauge. The overall feeling of the body. So. I'm just kind of looking into the future with that. So that's all I'm going to say about that, and I would hopefully just want to. Have a vote on this motion so we can move on to the next items as soon as possible. Thank you.
Right, Bev.
I I will be voting no on this motion because it seems like. We don't trust what Susan said, that it was a discussion that she had with the union leadership and it came to this agreement. So I will be voting no on this motion.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. On this motion, how do you vote, Adrian?
Aye.
Andrea.
Nay.
Beverly.
No.
Ian.
Aye, yes.
Jen.
No.
Matthew.
No.
Robert.
Nay.
I'm also a nay. So that's two in favor. Six opposed. That motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. That. From. For. Here on out for this budget process that any draft that's created. Is saved. Until the final vote. As a separate document so that we can. Vote on multiple numbers. Or have multiple scenarios available to us. When we finally vote on this later this month.
Any discussion?
I would like to make a friendly amendment. That we adopt this as a policy going forward for budget hearings forthwith.
Excuse me, Matthew. We didn't get a second on that motion. You didn't get a second.
Rob is seconding for.
Okay, thank you.
And then Matthew has offered a friendly amendment. Is there a second on that?
To to modify if if it's accepted by Mr. Thomas to modify it to be not just for this budget cycle, but. Going forth that.
Yeah, I'd accept that. Sure.
All right. So you're seconding the friendly amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, if we'd like to vote on the amendment, Adrian.
Aye.
Andrea.
No.
Beverly. I'll come back to Beverly. Ian.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
Rob.
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Beverly. All right, well, the ayes do have it. Even without Beverly's vote being recorded this time. Is there any discussion now on the main motion, which is, as I understand it, is that we save. Scenarios. Various budget scenarios going forward, assuming that. The the current software, which we've. Discussed. Upgrading does does support that. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll. I'll just say that despite the limitations of the software, we should just make sure that we find a way to get it done. This time around, whether it's just like saving a a simple spreadsheet. You know, or or it's yeah, somehow there's got to be a way to kind of bookmark like where you've been. So I would invite, you know, some comment from Dave on that at some point in the future is like what the procedure would be. But I mean, I I think. I should think it's possible.
It's very, very simple. You save what start out your new budget by saving the old budget. As the new budget name and then make your changes going into it.
Is there any other discussion on that? If not.
Actually, just preliminary wise, I think we we already kind of passed everything, didn't we? Because we passed the amendment that doesn't that also hold for the. Original motion.
I I think, Joan, don't we have to vote on the original motion now that we've amended it?
You do the amendment first and then you do this main motion as amended.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have stated it that way. So we'll. This this vote is to pass. Ian's original. Motion as amended. Adrian.
Aye.
Andrea.
I have I I'm back at that. Abstaining, Jay.
Okay, you're going to.
I I haven't given it enough thought.
All right, Beverly. Ian.
Oh, yes, aye, in favor.
Jen.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Matthew. Robert.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that does pass. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor. One abstention. All right. Are there any other motions regarding budget data requests?
Yes.
For the purpose of planning, can we just ask how many more you intend to. Introduce.
I have about three more.
Thirty.
Three, yeah. Not thirty, three, just three. So I'll make a motion to form an ad hoc budget committee. A budget procedure committee. So, um, I'll make a motion to form an ad hoc budget committee, a budget procedure committee. Uh, to begin meeting no later than June first and aim for completion of a budget procedure. By September first.
I second. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Adrian? All right, and any discussion on that?
I have a question. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to speak to the motion real quick. I mean, for, it won't be long, uh, for obvious reasons, uh, you know, I just think we need to. Uh, take some time immediately after this budget cycle is done to kind of debrief and then put together. A, uh, procedure that we can follow moving into the next budget cycle so that everything's kind of. Um, pre-ordered, so to speak, so that, um, everyone understands what is expected in a budget package and then. So that when we receive it in early January, that we have all the information we need to start deliberations as soon as possible. And also like having a sort of a set timeframe of how those deliberations will occur, um, and. Um, yeah, so I just think that would help kind of, you know, streamline the process and eliminate a lot of, uh, the friction. Thank you.
Uh, Jen?
That's what I was going to ask, like what you're going to put, like, um, what was the intent? So you're gonna, um. And this is just rough, like, are you thinking that we should have like summary pages? Um, this is what should be included in our books. Um, these are the items, um, that should be presented. Um, and when they should be discussed, like, sort of roughly, is that what you're proposing?
Uh, yes, exactly. Uh, well, hopefully the idea would be just to form the ad hoc committee and hopefully, uh. The chair would, would allow me to be one of the members seated on it. Um, or perhaps maybe, um. Well, no, I, I think, yeah, an ad hoc committee just to kind of put together a, uh, an outline of exactly all the stuff you said. You know, for the whole committee, for the committee of the whole to, to deliberate on and then determine like what do they want to go forward with. You know, so there would be sort of a two-step process. The ad hoc committee would come up with a draft procedure and then would submit that to the COW. For full deliberation adjustments, you know, maybe send it back to the ad hoc to, to, to redraft, revise. And then back to the COW for final approval, kind of like how we do the policy where there's a, a first read and a second read and then a vote.
Thank you.
I have a question too.
Uh, yes, Matthew.
I, I'm having a hard time getting my arms around this, uh. On the surface, it sounds very useful. But. I want to be sure that the tail's not wagging the dog. Uh, what comes to us or what has traditionally come to us in January. Has been a superintendent's budget, not a board's budget. And while it's arguably legal for the board to impose a. Format and process on the superintendent, I'm a little bit concerned about that. Uh, I do think it might be a very good idea for us to, uh. Give the superintendent a, a timeline as to when we want a budget. Uh, and maybe a framework of what we want the budget to be. But to have an open-ended mission for a committee to just define the entire process. Would seem to end up with a product that's not the superintendent's budget as she wants it. But telling her in advance what we want it to be. And she is, though I disagree with her quite regularly, she is the professional we've hired. Or indeed, whatever superintendent we hire would be the professional we hire to do the tasks that they're trained for. So I'm not opposed to her having some discussion, but I would be uncomfortable about voting for tonight. With the amount of information that Ian's provided. I'm not criticizing the information Ian's provided. But I don't think I have enough personally to make a judgment on this tonight, so I'll abstain.
Uh, Rob? And then I have something to say.
Um, part of me is confused on why setting up something for next year has to do with data requests from this year. Um, this sounds more like a thing for policy than for the group right now.
So I agree, uh, with Rob that this is not relevant to the current budget cycle. However, I feel strongly. That we do have the ability to set a format for the budget. The, the superintendent's budget is her recommended numbers. However, because it's ultimately going to become our budget very quickly. I think we do have the right to, to format, to, to create the, the overall format of the budget. And while I agree, you know, that it's, it's not. Uh, necessarily germane to, to the, the current budget, uh, Ian is mentioning that it start in June. And I think that gives us plenty of time to work toward the other one. So it is budget related and I, uh, intend to fully support it. Ian, then Andrea, then Adrian, then Jen.
Uh, appreciated, Jay. Um, so yeah, just, uh, real quick, I mean, yeah, actually you answered. You, you said what I was going to say a lot better, um, you know, it's, it's about format and there's just like. Just trying to look forward and I did also set the motion to be timed to, to take up after we get through this and I just thought. It would be a relatively short conversation that we could have about transforming a committee. The committee would do most of the work. There would be drafts involved. So it's no one, no one would be like issuing an, um, a commandment from a high or anything, um. So. Yeah, I would just encourage everyone just to vote in favor of this and we can discuss more in June as the thing takes shape. Thank you.
Uh, Andrea?
Jay, I'd rather hear what you have to say before I speak.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I actually spoke and I, I just realized my hand is still in the air. I apologize.
Okay.
So.
I'm going to pass.
Okay, so we'll go to Adrian and then Jen.
Yeah, um, I mean, my understanding is, um, that nothing would change. Um, as regard to the superintendent providing a budget and that being the starting point. Um, I mean, this, this all would have to be voted on by the board. Anyway, so after, after the committee goes through and develops a system for, um, tackling the budget next year. We're going to be able to, to deliberate on this again and make changes if we see fit. Um, so I feel that this is a great idea, um, considering how much time we've spent on this budget and it. In a process, um, you know, that, that we've got a lot of information out of, um, but maybe not in the most effective manner. Um, so I, I appreciate this, um, in anticipation for next year. So we don't end up, um, you know, in September saying we need to figure something out. Um, I mean, this is, this is just forming a committee to start, um, the process. So that we have something for next year, for next, you know, late December, early January.
Uh, Jen?
Um, totally in agreement with, um, Ian in regards to requesting a format. Um, we received, and I wasn't on the board last year, but from my understanding, like a whole. Board package was prepared in advance and in this session, um, you know, we received it piecemeal. Granted, they were trying something new. Um, Dave was new, so I'm sure it was just as painful for him. As it was for us and, um, I completely understand, um. How we were missing information and it was frustrating, so definitely in agreement with format and content. But not necessarily deciding what the superintendent will be inputting and proposing. So definitely, um, in support of determining the format that it will be presented to the board. Thank you.
All right, so are there any other, uh, comments before we go to a vote?
Yes, Jay.
Matthew?
Uh, perhaps Jay could, I'm sorry, perhaps Ian could say why this wouldn't just be a. Uh, charge to the budget committee. They're the ones, the budget, finance and, and facilities committee, since they're the ones who deal with most of the budget items. Why this wouldn't be a referral to them to do and they could ask for whatever input they want from whomever they want. What, why do we need another committee?
Um, if, Mr. Chair, if I may, um. It basically like, uh, in, in speaking with, um, with the chair, uh, the other night and. Just the, it, it is kind of, it would be a detailed document, you know, any sort of policy, any sort of procedure that, that anyone writes. Is going to take up a lot of time and, um, I don't want to distract from the finance facilities committee. Uh, they have ongoing business that I'm sure takes precedence over, over this and with a sense of immediacy, right? They have to, you know, we're coming into the summer, you know, time where, you know, a lot of facility improvements probably going to be occurring while the students are not. In school, so, um, yeah, I just didn't want to inhibit their ability to, 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 um. You know, manage their affairs and I just thought it was a highly targeted. One-time, you know, ad hoc committees sort of seem to fit the bill because once we establish this procedure. Then it's kind of settled business and unless something comes up over the next couple of years where we all want to add this item. Or maybe subtract that item, like some adjustment will always be, you know, uh, available. Um, as needed, but I just thought, you know, in order to, you know, my experience on the RTM, uh, creating documents and, uh, you know. Research reports and, um, various other procedures and rules, uh, you know, it does take a bit of time vetting, wordsmithing. Um, and I just thought it'd be great for ad hoc committee of, of those probably most. Interested in trying to put something cohesive together, something comprehensive, um. You know, to, to just kind of put their minds together and, and, and make it happen, present it to the whole body and, uh, move you through the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so if there's no other discussion, uh, why don't we, um, continue to vote? Um, so on the, uh, motion to create an ad hoc budget committee. Let's see, starting with, um, Adrian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Andrea?
Nay.
Beverly?
Nay.
Ian?
Aye.
Jen?
Yes, aye.
Matthew?
Abstain for the reasons cited.
Rob?
Nay.
Uh, my vote is aye. Uh, let's see, so we have one, two, three, four in favor. Uh, three opposed, one abstention.
Could we get a ruling from the parliamentary on this? I mean.
Motion fails.
Point of clarification, though.
If I may, if I may.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I, I don't know if this is in order or not, but I, I do believe that it's the, um. Regardless of how this vote comes out tonight, I, I, I'm going to suggest that it's still the prerogative of the chair. To create an ad hoc committee in the future, um, so maybe we can have some friendly discussion between now and then about that. Um, are there any other motions with regard to budget?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, um, I would, uh, I make a motion to, um. Have the administration produce a. Document that lists the date of origin and any modifications of all positions in the district over the past nine years.
So you're asking for, uh, dates of creation of all FTEs over the last nine years?
Yeah, anything that was new, um, or anything that was modified or combined with other ones, um.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Help me understand what that's going to do for us.
Well, um. It would help us understand, you know. How the districts have been growing. And developing and evolving. Um, I'd be open to a, an amendment for an adjustment on the amount of time, looking back. Um, I just, the number nine was, uh, matched up with my initial, uh, request. Um, from many weeks back, um. However, uh. I think the more pertinent period of time would be in the last, you know, five years. Um, prior to COVID and then through COVID and then now, um, although to get a good baseline. Uh, to kind of identify the trends, um, you know, I think that's why the nine number was there. In my initial request from the twenty ninth of January, um. You know, it ha- has to do with like just kind of tracking the growth of how the district develops and, and what positions are being added, what thing, what's being modified. And to see, you know, if we need to make, you know, any, you know, considerations there, that's all.
Can I just say that that was added to the FAQ sheet? So you do have a history of about five years, um, that should be on there. So it was updated today. So you do have something to look at.
I did see that email come through, but I didn't have a chance to really review the document.
Well, there's been a lot. There's over a hundred and fifty frequently asked questions. The staff has spent enormous time. Trying to do their day job and to fulfill those requests, the FOIs and the FAQs. And so we have published another four or five. I talked to Jay this morning and, um, we have spent. Many, many hours and you're interrupting my daily work. So we're trying to do what we can. But, um, I'm just saying that you, you need to read what we've put out there and not keep asking for things that have already been given to you.
All right, well, I appreciate those comments, but however, I, you know, we did receive that email just today. Um, and I did not get a chance to review the document prior to this meeting as, you know, I work up until late afternoon. So, um.
Well, take a look at it because I think we'll see both additions and subtractions each year on FTEs.
All right, very well then. In that case, I would withdraw this motion. Uh, pending review of that document.
Okay, thank you. The motion is withdrawn.
Um, and, uh, just for parliamentary, uh, Adrian will have to withdraw his second.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. Um, and Matthew, I, 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 I don't really think we can entertain any discussion since the motion's been, uh.
Very good.
Been removed.
All right, and so then I'll make one last, well, yeah, um. One last motion here is to, um. For the board to review the Niasq report and the updated section, um. In a special meeting with the option to go in executive session if needed.
Is there a second on that?
I'll, I'll second it so we can talk about it.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, it's just a little background on this. The Niasq report, New England Association of Schools and Colleges is the accreditation. Uh, authority that, um, you know, reviews schools of the region and, uh, they surveyed the district. Uh, they issued a report in twenty twenty and then, um. There were some findings in that report and then there was an updated document, uh, that was sort of a response document, if I understand the context correctly. Um, where, uh, Principal Kelleher and, and a few of the administration had, uh, sought to address some of the concerns and the findings. And, and the initial report. And again, I just think, um, you know, a brief meeting reviewing this. And again, I just think, you know, a brief meeting reviewing this document would help serve as, will give us some guidance and some areas of focus as far as like places we may need to allocate funding or at least check in on to make sure that those areas are being properly funded and supported as needed.
So I would simply say that the report, I, I asked that the report be shared with the board. Certainly anyone can, can read it anytime they wish and, and study it. I'm not opposed to putting it on as a agenda item at some point. I just don't know that we need to, to vote tonight to, to add an agenda item to a future COW. And I'm not aware of any provision of the law that would allow us to discuss it in executive session. I, I just want to mention that.
I would say that we did originally have several presentations, but we'd be happy to bring it back and let you know any updates. At a COW.
Adrian.
Yeah, I would just say, I, I, I have, I have not fully read that document. I did skim through it and look at some highlights and I, I believe it is important for the board to look at. I, I, I'll have to agree that I don't know that it's necessary to review that in a board meeting as a whole. You know, I think board members can, can review it and hopefully we're going to have some more budget meetings and I think we should bring that up because the data is available. But I, I don't know that we need a, my own personal opinion is a special meeting for that.
Uh, Bev.
I, I just want, I don't want to repeat what Adrian said, but I do agree with what Adrian just said.
Uh, Ian.
Yeah, those are all fair points. I, you know, and I just would encourage all the, all the board members to read it then, if this motion should fail. You know, and, and be prepared to, to maybe discuss some of it. You know, in context of other budget items moving forward. So that being said, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? And again, I, I, I did feel it was important and asked Joyce to send all of you a copy of it. And I, I do also encourage you, no matter how this comes out, I do encourage you to read that. And there's any number of other documents that I would highly encourage that, that we study. And there's probably more coming from Hartford soon. All right, so. At this point, we will call a motion on having a special meeting to review the NEASK report. Adrian?
Well, I'll abstain.
Andrea.
Nay.
Beverly.
No.
Ian.
Yes.
Jen.
No.
Uh, Matthew.
No.
Uh, Rob.
Nay.
And I'll just say nay to this. It's worth reading, but I don't want to have a special meeting. Right. So that motion does fail.
Um, I have, actually, there's one last motion I have. More of a procedural thing, just as we move forward with these budget review special meetings, I, I would make a motion that we include a standing agenda item to move into executive session should any topic arise that would predicate it or require it under the five points as identified by the FOI Commission.
Question?
Yes.
I understood, I'm not a parliamentarian, but I understood that to go into executive session, we had to put in a agenda item on the, an agenda item saying possible executive session on the topic of fish jumping out of the pond. In compliance with whatever the law is, we have to, I believe, identify the exact purpose of going into the executive session. I don't know that we can have a general session.
And it has to be none of these 24 hours ahead of time?
We're not, not even talking about the timing. The timing, yes, it has to be 24 hours, but I believe that the statute requires a very clear identification of the specific of what's going to be talked about.
Um, Joan is probably going to remind me that I don't think we had a second to start this discussion.
That is correct.
Um, could I rephrase? Could I take the opportunity to rephrase my motion then?
Okay.
I move that we craft our special meeting agendas moving forward to have a standing agenda item where executive session may be held to consider personnel and office positions in relation to the budget.
Second.
Could we ask Joan if that has us complying? Because I don't know.
Ian, can I ask you to read that one more time?
Uh, yes, I make a motion to hold to
Say crap.
Meeting agendas for the budget to allow for a possible executive session as a standing agenda item to discuss personnel and office positions in relation to the budget.
And then I was seconded by and now Andrea. You had a comment?
I do. I believe that that including such a statement on the agenda would signify to the public that we have a general distrust either of the superintendent or of the board members themselves. Once again, I want to express my concern over, over the contentious na- nature of this board and the messages that it's sending out to public.
So my only concern, I, I'm not an attorney, but every time we have noticed an executive session, we have been extremely specific about, about the subject. This is similar to what Matthew said. You cannot say to discuss, you know, like a general personnel matter. It has to be a specific personnel matter. And, or it has to be, you know, a lawsuit or something very, very specific. I'm not aware of a, a legal notice that allows you to, to notice an executive session that might spontaneously occur in the middle of another meeting. So I could be wrong, but that's not the way I understood executive session to, to work. So. Ian.
So I have a document here that discusses executive session. I'll email it to the rest of the board to follow up, but it's written by Kristen Sullivan, Principal Analysis for the FOI Commission. And it says executive sessions may be held to discuss, there's five reasons. They may be held to discuss, one, individual officers or employees unless the officer employee asks for a public hearing. And then strategies or negotiations about pending claims or pending litigation. Security matters is number three. Real estate transactions is number four. And number five is any matter that would result in disclosing to public record that is exempt from disclosure. Now, I can understand the concerns about having more specificity attached to the executive session. But just in the nature of discussing budget items, I mean, we've already discussed. I mean, we're not discussing individual employees in particular, but we're discussing a lot of positions. So I don't know, I would defer to the attorneys on this one. I mean, maybe that's what we should ask. You know, as for some guidance from the attorney. So maybe, maybe the motion should be withdrawn and rephrased to get guidance on how could we? Or is it possible for us to, 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 because as we discuss the budget, I mean, at some point we may end up discussing positions and offices that may need to be adjusted or, you know, what have you. So you know, if it, if it's not legally possible, then I guess we can't do it. I just wanted to put it out there for discussions purpose. Just discussion purposes and see where, where, uh, we're at. But, you know, maybe this should evolve into asking the attorney for guidance on how should we proceed with such matters?
I'm going to recognize Adrian, then Bev, then Rob, and then I have something to say.
Yeah. So I personally feel like just having something open-ended might give the wrong impression to the public if we, if we just have some, you know, the, some, some form of a, you know, of wording that we can always kind of break out and talk privately from a meeting. I am interested in finding a way forward to be able to talk about positions comfortably, I guess. You know, hopefully we're talking about adding positions, but, but I guess talking about that in a format where we're not talking about, you know, people's lives, you know, in, in such a public manner. So I, I would be interested in, in researching this a little bit more and maybe finding ways to discuss this. You know, this topic anyway. So I, I, I don't know that I support having it on, on the, on the agenda every week, but I do, I do hope that we look into this a little bit more.
Uh, Bev and, and Rob.
Okay, I, I do not support having this on the agenda every week. If, if we need to go into executive session, then the chair will put that on the agenda. But just having this on the agenda every week, I think it sends a bad message. And even if the attorney says we can, I would still vote against it because I don't think there's a need to do that. Just have that as a standing item on the agenda every week. And we never had it before and you had to have a reason to go into executive session. So I will be voting against this now in the future.
Thank you, Bev. Uh, Rob.
My problem with this is it's kind of a slippery slope. We are you know, elected by the people and we can make decisions whether or not to, who, what superintendent to hire. But it's not our job to do her day-to-day job. It's not our job to manage the school. It's not our job to hire educators. Definitely not our job to get rid of their positions because we can excuse it with a budget. So I'm going to vote no against this. Anytime it's coming that we're trying to go over the superintendent's head, we're getting a budget for her. When that's passed, that's her budget, not ours to go and put our fingers in.
Amen to that, Rob.
Sorry?
I, I just want to say. Amen to what Rob said.
Okay. I just want to say that I, I think this has been the most transparent board and probably is one of the most transparent boards in the state. Executive session, I think should be reserved for just those very sensitive issues. Otherwise everything should be done, you know, the, the whole idea of FOI and the open meetings law in, in Connecticut, which I think is one of the strongest in the nation is that everything be discussed in public. However, if there is a compelling reason that we would need to go into executive session, certainly I will make sure that that provision is listed on, on the agenda for, for any of the, you know, legitimate reasons. Otherwise, as painful as it may be, in the future, there are things we may have to discuss in public because there have been very few areas that, that are exempt from that. So.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, like I said, I just wanted to put this out there for conversation sake and to figure out like where, where, you know, people are with this and, and, and also like, you know, just to see you know, what was possible and not possible. You know, I can't say I'm actually in favor of it. I just wanted to discuss it with the rest of the board on the record. So you know, I'm, I'm ready for the vote, but I just want to be clear. That, you know, we also got that attorney's memo from the chair last week where, you know, the process is the superintendent hands the budget off to us as a board and the board then takes it. And we can make adjustments. We have that authority. Now, whether or not we choose to use it is up to us as a body. So that is a legitimate point of conversation. And we can allocate money to different departments within the budget if we feel that perhaps we disagree with what the superintendent has proposed. So whether or not we choose to do that is another story. So that being said, yeah, I agree with, with the idea that, you know, having a standing agenda item is probably not the best way to move forward. However, it is difficult to anticipate, you know, given the current structure, when we might be talking about sensitive nature, things of a sensitive nature and when we're not. So that may tie into a future conversation about how we schedule our budget deliberations moving forward. But as for right now, I guess we're just going to kind of figure it as we go. Thank you.
Fair enough. All right. So uh, we will proceed then with the vote on adding a standing agenda item to go into executive session. Adrian.
Nay.
Andrea.
No.
No.
Beverly.
No.
Ian.
No.
Jen.
No.
Matthew. Matthew.
My apologies. No.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at a piece of paper and writing down and I'm not looking at the screen. So I apologize.
I'm sorry.
And Rob.
Nay.
And I'm nay on that as well. All right. Thank you, everyone. So that fails. If there are no other items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Quick, wait, wait. Quick, quick question there, Jay. Just a parliamentary question. The vote on see, the motion to, to form the ad hoc budget procedure, it was a four, three. Uh, I'm sorry, the, yeah, budget procedure committee. It was a four, three, one vote? Uh, if I can get some clarification.
Yeah. Yes, four, three, one.
All right. And the very first item we took a vote on tonight was a four, three or four, was it a four, two, one? Four, two, two vote?
Yeah, it was almost the same, Ian, as the vote that, um, the ad hoc committee vote. It should have passed the ad hoc committee vote.
Right. So I just want to get clear, like we need to be consistent between the two other. They both pass or they both fail?
I will ask Joan to clarify that for the minutes.
I have on this fail.
Yeah. We had four votes in favor for the first motion tonight. And then we had four votes in favor of the ad hoc budget procedure committee.
Yeah.
And the very first motion tonight, I forget exactly what the motion was, but it was a four votes in favor and it was declared to have passed.
It was seven. I'm looking at my notes.
Yeah, I have seven. I have seven.
I have seven.
So, but we can certainly review all this and put it all in the minutes. That's not what I had written down. So.
Um, maybe it was the second budget item. There was another budget item. I swear it had four votes in favor.
Okay. Well, this has all been recorded and it will all be indicated in the minutes. So there's a motion on the floor to
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.